You're watching WSTV. Digital Media.
Good evening, I call to order this November sixteenth meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the City Secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Light?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Is that me? Councilmember Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Thank you very much. Tonight, as we pause for our moment of silence, we would certainly ask everyone to keep in mind the terrible tragedy that happened over in Paris this past weekend and certainly keep the individuals there in mind.
Thank you. And would you join the City Council with me in the place of allegiance?
In the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Sergeant-at-Arms tonight is Lieutenant Chris Fish. Lieutenant, this here is a place, there, right there. Thank you Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. This may be the safest place in Winston tonight, I think.
I thought about that.
Welcome to members of our police force. Ladies and gentlemen, Councilmember Montgomery texted me just a moment ago, he had a death in the family and he's on his way back from South Carolina. He was in Charlotte just a little while ago and he'll, he's getting here just as quickly as he can. And then Councilmember Clark is actually out of the country on a business trip as well. Tonight's agenda of the City Council is comprised of two parts, the general agenda and the consent agenda. As always, the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion on, of the items on the consent agenda unless a member so requests, at which time we will remove that item from the consent agenda and consider it individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. The meeting is being televised live tonight on TV thirteen and it will be replayed Tuesday at nine AM and again Wednesday at nine PM. Of course, copies of our agenda as well as videos of our meetings are always available online to a citizen at our website, www.cityofws.org and just simply click on the watch City Council Meetings Online option. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to pull?
C two.
I move for the balance of the consent agenda to be accepted.
Second.
Motion second to approve the balance of the consent agenda, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All in favor of opposed, no, rather, no notes, that's unanimous. Now, item C two.
Item C two, consideration of items relating to permanent financing for development of rental housing known as the Pepper Building in the Northwest Ward, recommended by Finance Committee. A, resolution authorizing permanent financing for development of fifty-four units of rental housing known as the Pepper Building. And B, ordinance amending the project budget ordinance for the city of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, for the fiscal year 2015-2016.
Thank you. Councilmember McIntosh asks this item to be pulled.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm not going to be supporting this tonight. I do believe that the project is a great one and I think the developer has done great work in downtown, has been an urban pioneer, I applaud him for that. I just want to say though, I think that the scarce resources that we have when it comes to economic development, I don't think they're necessary to be used on this project. I think this project would survive and flourish as a market project without our help, but I do think it's going to go forward and I know it's going to be a great project when it's done, that's just something I had to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams, this did come out of Finance Committee with unanimous recommendation, I recognize you.
Yes Mayor, I move for approval of item C two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no?
No.
Motion passes with a four, two, one. All right, thank you. Councilmember Burke?
I see that Mr.
Five to one, excuse me.
I see Mr. Coe is here and I want to take this opportunity to thank him for the work that he's doing and I'm sure if Mr. Montgomery was here to thank him for the work he's doing on Cameron and the houses there that you've made them, helped to make them nice for our veterans. And when we had the program over there, we were very pleased to see all the people who gathered and all other people who are not here and you participated with making that a successful project and partnering with the city. We thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Burke. We'll get back to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following items, there's an economic development item, an item authorizing the sale of city-owned property, a continuum of care homeless grant application, an item authorizing emergency solutions grant funds, an item making recommendations for appointments to boards and commissions as well as the public comment period. The economic development item is listed for a public hearing and when this hearing is called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the City Council will consider the item. Phillips, before we go to the first item, I want to take just a moment and say that tonight is Ms. Phillips' last meeting with the city of Winston-Salem and City Secretary, she is retiring after eighteen years as City Secretary. And I'm sure the council joins with me in thanking you for your wonderful service to the city of Winston-Salem. But before you retire, you've got a little work to do, so we're going to read the first item.
Item G one, thank you. Public hearing on resolution modifying a previously approved economic development agreement for the expansion of Wake Forest Innovation Quarter, recommended by the Finance Committee.
Ask Mr. Page just to give us a brief summary of what this action entails.
Good evening, the mayor, members of the City Council. In two thousand and thirteen, you all approved an economic development agreement with Wake Forest Innovation Quarter to build a parking deck as part of the renovation of the building Ninety South Project. The parking deck was going to go at the southwest corner of Seventh and Vine Street, or excuse me, Seventh and what is now Research Parkway is where the parking deck was wanting to originally go. Because of stormwater issues, they've been unable to build a parking deck at that location and have asked to move the parking deck one block south and three blocks west to the corner of Fifth and Patterson. All other conditions of the original economic development project, including a ninety million dollar investment, including four hundred and fifty jobs, fifty which would be new jobs, would all be remaining the same. The only change to the deal is the relocation of the parking deck three blocks. Happy to answer any questions?
So the only change is moving it about a block in one direction.
Yes.
Any other questions, Mr.? All right, very good. This is a public hearing, is anyone in council chamber who wishes to be heard on this amendment to the public safety, to the public economic development project? All right, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, I recognize Councilmember Adams.
Thank you Mayor, I move that we accept G one for the expansion of Wake Forest Innovation Quarter.
Sir, second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Uh, Councilmember Burke?
I've stated on occasions, as I ride through there and see the progress that's being made, we commend and appreciate the efforts. It's a new place there and it's making a difference. The only question I would have to ask, when you talk about the four hundred and some jobs that's going to be created, how many of those jobs are we saying going to be created for the citizens in Winston-Salem?
Mr. Page?
Councilmember Burke, four hundred and fifty jobs would be at the facility. Of those four fifty, four hundred would be existing jobs relocated from the main campus, fifty jobs would actually be new jobs and the goal is to have as many of those jobs as possible for Winston-Salem residents.
And I guess I would say at this time, uh, mayor, members of the council, as I've emphasized to the city manager, the importance of making sure our citizens who live in the city, the citizens who pay the taxes in the city, and the citizens who have been downsized from their job, whether it's north, east, south, or west of this city, who are capable and able, and I want the folks from, uh, who we are giving money to and working with, for them to understand clearly that these citizens may not be employed in the jobs that they were once employed, but I've said to the mayor, members of this city, when we bring companies in here, we need to make sure that we take care of home. There are a lot of capable, able, smart people in this city and we cannot say it enough. So the jobs that are the fifty jobs that you're talking about, if we can give any of those jobs to our citizens, I feel that we should and it should be emphasized, Mr. City Manager, and it should be clearly understood. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that is unanimous, thank you. Item two?
Item G two, resolution authorizing the sale of certain city-owned property at sixteen hundred Harrison Avenue, under the upset bid procedure of North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash two sixty-nine in the North Ward. Finance Committee forwarded this item with two in favor, one absent, none opposed, and one abstaining.
You have to recognize Councilmember Adams coming out of the Finance Committee.
Mayor, thank you, and I appreciate staff for bringing back the information that I requested about the purchaser of the property signing off that he will have it repaired within six months and I think that's great. Restoring a great historic property back into the community on Harrison Avenue. And with that, I move for approval of G two.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item three?
Item G three, resolution authorizing submission of continuum of care homeless grant application, acceptance of grant funds, and execution of agreements. Finance Committee forwarded this item with two in favor, one absent, none opposed, and one excused, recommended by Community Development Housing General Government Committee.
Uh, this was an item we were going to need to excuse Councilmember Montgomery, but obviously since he's here tonight, we don't need to do that. Councilmember Light, this did come in out of your committee as well, if you'd like to make a motion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the staff for the information that was sent on this item and I will move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item four?
Item V four, resolution authorizing awards of recaptured federal fiscal year twenty fourteen emergency solutions grant funds. Finance Committee forwarded this item with two in favor, one absent, none opposed, and one excused, and it was recommended by Community Development Housing General Government Committee.
Again, this was an item that we were going to need to excuse Councilmember Montgomery, but again, he's not here. I'd recognize Councilmember Light.
Thank you. Again, thanks for the information, Mr. Brooks, and I will move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item five?
Item G five, mayor joins recommendations for appointments to boards and commissions. A, Public Assembly Facility, Facilities Commission, Jim White, appointment with a term expiring August twenty eighteen, Billy Rich, appointment with a term expiring August twenty seventeen, James C. Rose, appointment with a term expiring August twenty eighteen, and Cindy L. Strine, appointment with a term expiring August twenty seventeen.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Mayor, as I have emphasized, the importance of making sure that we balance these committees with a diversity. I don't know how the big committee already looks.
Right, that, we did, we do that every time I bring a recommendation, is to make sure that when we come back with a recommendation, that we're keeping a good balance on all these committees.
All right, because if somebody just did not know this and they looked at this, the ones we are recommending now, it looks like it's not quite balanced.
Mm-hmm.
So we keep emphasizing the importance.
Right. I strongly agree with that.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you.
B, Community Agency Allocation Committee, five of the eight recommendations, Mildred Wood, appointment, term expiring November twenty eighteen, Martha Logoman, appointment, term expiring November twenty seventeen, Melissa Witte Glover, appointment, term expiring November twenty seventeen, Jesse Idd, appointment, term expiring November eighteen, and Talia Price, appointment with a term expiring November twenty seventeen.
Councilmembers, we did bring eight, for the staff was anxious to try to get some in place because they're under a very tight timeframe here and we'll, I know you all have given me some names for the others, we'll move forward with those at the next meeting, but entertainment motion on these.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, that's unanimous, thank you. Item six, please.
Item G six, public comment period.
Uh, this is a time, once per month, where the City Council sets aside thirty minutes to hear from citizen who wish, citizens who wish to address it on matters that are germane to city policy, uh, and we would ask individuals who would like to speak to come forward, give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. First person signed up was Lieutenant Danny Watts.
I'm Lieutenant Danny Watts, seven twenty-five North Cherry Street. Good evening, Mayor Joins, Mayor Prokem Burke, and members of City Council. I would like to thank Chief Roundtree tonight for initiating the conversation with Councilman Taylor that has led me here tonight. I'm a twenty-six-year veteran of the Winston-Salem Police Department, currently serving as a lieutenant over the recruiting unit in Triane Division. I've served in the recruiting unit fourteen of those twenty-six years, having hired approximately five hundred police officers during that time. Behind me, actually on all sides of me, you see a small sampling of men and women who don the uniform and badge every single day and place themselves between you and whatever danger you may face. It's on their behalf that I speak tonight. There are also non-sworn members of our department present as well as representatives from behind the blue line. I want to thank each of them for attending tonight in support of this worthwhile discussion. I'm here this evening to discuss officer retention. We are losing officers to other police departments at an alarming rate. Since January twenty twelve, we have lost seventy-five experienced officers to other departments. This is over five hundred years of combined experience out the door. These departments offer much higher salaries. As a matter of fact, the Winston-Salem Police Department is the lowest-paid major police department in this state. Even more notable is that our agency pays less than any smaller departments in the state, many smaller departments in the state, such as Kernersville Police Department, to which we have lost approximately five officers in the last couple of years. We also now realize that we are competing nationally, not just locally, in terms of our retention. Seattle, Washington, Austin, Texas are our two main recent competitors. When these experienced officers leave, we must replace them with new inexperienced officers. Studies show that inexperience leads to a higher possibility of being the subject of excessive use of force complaint, courtesy complaints, as well as more likely to be involved in traffic accidents. These types of incidents affect our citizens' perception of the police department and the city of Winston-Salem. The department has worked hard over the past ten years to build bridges with all citizens and we want to maintain those positive relationships. Additionally, these types of incidents often come at a high cost to the city in the form of civil suits and settlements. Additionally, a loss we suffer due to high turnover is far, is far greater than the resulting personnel shortage left in its wake. Currently, the police department must utilize overtime pay to ensure adequate staffing levels are met. Dollars that could be better spent in retention efforts, which would secure a greater return in terms of morale, tenure, and overall value back to the community. Additionally, recruiting, processing, and training new officers is time-consuming and costly. The two thousand and two ORIC study of police compensation issue states that the cost of replacing a three-year officer is more than twice his salary. The old adage rings true, we get what we pay for, but should we really be paying, shouldn't we really be paying for tenured, experienced officers instead of continually paying to keep hiring new inexperienced officers?
Lieutenant, you're three minutes away, can you summarize very quickly for us?
I will, sir, thank you. I think we can all agree that experience is important, such as a pilot flying an airplane, a surgeon performing an operation. What I'm trying to point out is the field of police work is critically dependent on real experience. In order to be competitive in the employment market and retain our tenured, experienced officers, we need to implement pay structures such as a step-based compensation plan similar to those offered by competing law enforcement agencies. In conclusion, a high turnover rate diminishes the strength and cohesion a department gains from experienced staff. It is our hope to gain your meaningful support and advocacy so we may jointly reach and implement solutions that will foster the retention of experienced officers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
I'll call on the next speaker, is, I think it's Corporal Jamison Keltner, sorry, I can't make out the last name, I beg pardon.
Kilmer.
Kilmer, if you'd come forward, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council.
Good evening.
My name is Jamison Kelton, I'm a corporal assigned to the Patrol Division of the Winston-Salem Police Department. A lot of the things that I want to say mirror what Lieutenant Watts said. So, one thing I would add to what he said is, um, I've been in law enforcement for fifteen years, my first six years were with Fayetteville Police Department, Fayetteville, North Carolina, and around two thousand and four, two thousand and five, I was working for that department when the city and the department worked through the same issues that we're here discussing tonight with retention. And I know firsthand, a lot of it had to do with pay. And what solved that problem was when the city implemented a step pay plan for the police department down there. I mean, it almost immediately ended that problem. First of all, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. I'm a resident of this city as well as a employee of the police department. The Winston-Salem Police Department, again, is the fourth-largest police department in North Carolina and ranks in pay well below other major departments. An average four-year officer with no rank of the Raleigh Police Department makes sixty-three thousand dollars a year. There are currently twenty-five-plus-year veteran sergeants at the Winston-Salem Police Department that make an average salary of fifty-seven thousand dollars per year. There's no explanation for this disparity in pay. And I'd like to add that based on the step pay plan in Fayetteville, if I was still there, based on my years of experience, not having been promoted, I would be making nearly sixty-two thousand dollars a year as just a patrol officer. Officers are currently leaving the department, as Lieutenant Watts stated, to seek employment with smaller agencies who offer more pay. Officers have left our agency for better-paying positions with departments such as Kernersville Police Department, Austin, Texas, and departments in Seattle and Washington. Due to compression over the years, we currently have officers who are still in training making salaries within a few cents of the six-to-seven-year veteran officers who are training these rookie police officers. Medical insurance rates have consistently been increasing without pay increases that meet the cost of living. Many of our officers are forced to work secondary jobs just to provide for their families. The citizens of Winston-Salem deserve experienced, well-trained officers who are not being forced to look for employment with other agencies based on pay. Your dedicated officers that faithfully serve you and the citizens respectfully request that you make competitive market pay adjustments across all ranks at the police department, that you assess and appropriately adjust all pay bands to a more competitive level with other agencies, and that measures are made to retain veteran employees. All of us here thank you for your consideration in this matter and for demonstrating your commitment to keeping Winston-Salem Police Department an agency of choice for law enforcement in this state. Thank you.
Thank you Corporal, greatly appreciate it. Uh, before we go on, I think I, Councilmember Taylor, Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, I know the city manager sent an email out today, might ask the city manager just to comment very briefly on that.
Thank you Mayor, Chairman Taylor. We have been working for the last six weeks with the police and fire chiefs and our human resources and budget departments to, to assess the situation. We will be bringing a report to public safety on police and fire salaries in a few weeks or to the December meetings. Uh, our initial review shows that, and we're comparing primarily to the triad, it's probably not realistic to try to compete with Austin, Texas, but we're behind the triad. We're behind Kernersville, High Point, Greensboro, Forsyth County, Guilford, all of them, we're behind them. Uh, so that initial review shows that our starting salaries in the police department and fire are about ten percent behind, but our officers, as I mentioned, are not moving and advancing through the pay plan the way those other cities are. They have mechanisms that move their officers quicker, uh, as far as advancing. So it's a complex problem, which of course we'll take financial resources, but we're going to bring a report to public safety and then come back early in the new year to the Finance Committee with an early budget forecast to talk about some options for implementing that, as well as a request I've had from several council members to look at another pay issue related to raising our minimums over several years to fifteen dollars an hour, so that's another issue as well, but we'll be bringing both of those back in early two thousand and sixteen to the Finance Committee.
I think what we're saying is we take your concerns very, very seriously and the city manager's working on that and several council members have addressed that and I'd call on the Public Safety Chairman, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you Mayor, City Manager. I just want to say to all the officers who are here, thank you for being here and coming and speaking up. We have heard you loud and clear. I always say, on camera and off camera, I truly believe we have some of the best police officers in the United States and some of the best police officers in the world. And we'll do whatever we can to make sure that we're competitive. It's important to us to attract and retain the brightest and the best. Public safety depends on it. We'll continue to do what we can and it's not just fluff, we're not just talking, we mean business. And obviously, from looking around the room, I see that you mean business and we'll continue to do what it takes to make sure that we keep our citizens safe and that we're doing what we can so that you can take care of your families. That's important to us and we thank you for being here.
Thank you, and Councilmember Burke?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, since I did serve quite a few years to be chairman of public safety, and I've always said that when we go to bed at night, how happy we can be that we're in safe, safe places where we live. And we have the Winston-Salem Police Department making it possible for us to be safe. We want to commend you and I appreciate you for what you do and I know that the city manager has clearly heard you and understand you because we've made big investments in you and we'd rather for them to stay here than for somebody else to be able to use the investments that have been made. I appreciate both of the speakers, but if I seem to be biased or partial, I appreciate Lieutenant Watts. Hey, where did he go? Um, just standing up. I was his counselor, so you did a good job in your presentation, thank you.
Councilmember Light?
Thank you. I just want to assure you all that this is not just coming to us today, it's something that we have talked about and talked about for quite a long time in council meetings that we know we are behind other cities and we know we have to do something about it. And so, uh, thank you for coming to talk to us and, uh, we'll get moving on it.
Councilwoman Bessie, then Councilmember Adams, Montgomery.
Yeah, I'd like to add my thanks to all the officers who came tonight, spent your time away from your family this evening to do that, appreciate the speakers, to help underline an issue that we are aware that we have. We have been working to try to address the worst of the market salary disparities in the city for the last couple of years and we know we have more work to do and a lot of that work is in the police department. Thank you for your time and, uh, please know that I and my colleagues support acting on this issue.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you Mayor. When I, when I got elected in oh-nine, I think a lot of you remember, that's one of the things I told you because you told me that's what you wanted to see happen, that we address the pay disparity. I remember also requesting the city manager to put together or go and his staff to do a disparity study, you see, I come out of corporate, whatever, do a disparity study on the salaries of our employees and bank them up against the other cities in the state of North Carolina. Every state, every, the other cities comparative to Winston, Durham, Raleigh, Wilmington, Charlotte, Greensboro. We've known this and with you telling us and with the data telling us also, but I also knew, and I know some of my council members, they shake when I say this and I'm not just saying, we've always prided ourselves on being the lowest taxed city in the state. You know, sometimes low taxes don't get you what you really need for your citizens and your employees and I think what we've done is we've, you know, we've done what we had to do over the past ten, twenty years, but now it's time, we have got to do something. And you being here this evening shows and it pushes us now that we have to do something. So I am looking forward to seeing what we have to do to make this happen. Will it happen overnight, you get this big five, six, ten thousand dollar jump? No, but it should be, like you said, a step payment incrementally to get us there so we can hopefully, all of you that are standing in this room who are not retiring yet, will stay with us and give us a chance to make it happen. I promise you, as I've done for the past six years, I will be working on your behalf because if you can't pay your employees and value your employees, then that, that's just a bad business going, going nowhere. So I look forward to working with you with my colleagues in addressing this issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Montgomery? Thank you. Councilwoman Montgomery, welcome.
Yes, first, I apologize to my targets, and I hope that they had shared that I deftened family today, and so we funeralized. And I may have done something that if one of you passed me, you probably would have pulled me over for, trying to get here, but it was important today to be here for several reasons. One, I got the notice later this afternoon that you all would be present to speak to this issue. And it's important for a number of reasons. I think you all highlight not just the challenges within the police department, but the challenges that we face as an entire city government in terms of making sure that we pay employees what they are worth and the work that they're doing. And I know that, particularly for certain groups within city government, such as police officers and firefighters, and as well as those who work and drive buses and sanitation workers, it's easier for them to come together and to advocate as one voice. But the fact of the matter is, is that as we've been presenting in Finance Committee and others, there are other portions and other jobs and other duties within the city of Winston-Salem where they're facing the same challenges that you're facing right now. And I hope that, one, this council sees what you have presented today. Secondly, the community in which you all serve each and every day that you protect and serve, that you put your lives on the line, understands and sees it as well. Because at the end of the day, we are responsible for making sure that they receive the services that they believe they deserve, but also the fact of the matter that they're paying to make sure that you are getting what you deserve as well. And so, one, we salute you. I thank you for everything that you do personally, and for the communities that you serve in that I represent. I believe they thank you as well. And I believe that they would advocate for the same thing, to make sure that you are compensated duly for the work that you are doing. And I would challenge my colleagues as well, that we look at, one, the officers who are present here, but we have more work to do within the entire city government.
Thank you. Again, thank you all for coming tonight. Next person signed up is Joanne Allen.
Joanne Allen, P.O. Box 284, Winston-Salem, 27102. First of all, I would like to say that this did not just happen overnight. And I just want to say that talk is just that talk. If you tell someone that you've known about this for many years and nothing was done, then that tells me, and I'm going to repeat something that I told you all over a year ago, that this is a very ineffective council. It truly is. And as I've stated before on previous, previous occasions, is that, first of all, I'd like to commend the men and the women of the blue, as well as the fire department and everyone else, because these are the backbone, actually, along with the sanitation workers and other city workers that do the job. Some of them do it better than others. So when I hear that we're giving money to the Pepper Building for Mike Cole, Mr. Mike Cole, and I hear people thanking these individuals for what they're doing and how the city has been so wasteful, and your priorities are so turned around, but then it seems like it's nothing when I take a look at the people who put their lives out here on the line for every last one of us. I have a problem with that. And as I said a long time ago, a change is coming here to Winston-Salem. Once again, this city government is very disconnected. We have to take care, as Ms. Burke said, of home. But the problem is, once again, all I hear and all I've heard for the past year is that it's just talk. That's all you all do, is talk, and give our money away to other individuals and other corporations and nonprofit organizations, when we've got these dedicated individuals right here. So all I'm saying is this, is that if we can turn around and make a profit for Mr. Cole and everyone, if we can become a banker for everyone other than the citizens and the people who work for this city, we have a problem. And the problem starts with this current, as well as past, city council meetings. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to be heard during public comment? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public comment period. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion, a second to adjourn. On the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Nobody knows. We adjourn.